I call the 2,394th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in City Limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card. And I had one, oh, here they are. Filling out a yellow comment card available on the desk over there for those at City Hall, or by emailing ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando sea solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, etc. Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then for today's announcements. We are still accepting nominations for our 2023 Volunteer of the Year at engage.milwaukee.gov. Anyone who resides in Milwaukee or is a member of an organization that serves Milwaukee is eligible. Those nominating a person are asked to discuss the nominee's volunteer work and how it has improved the community. Nominations will be accepted until February 14. If you still have a Christmas tree you need to dispose of, drop it off this Saturday at North Clackamas Park from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The North Clackamas Watersheds Council and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District are collecting trees that will be used to improve fish habitat. No plastic, tinsel, or frosted trees will be accepted. The event organizers suggest donating a $5 fee for drop-offs. Volunteers are also welcome to come help tie down trees at Spring Park at the work party on Saturday, January 27. Please note that city offices and the library will be closed on January 15 in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And finally, City Manager Ann Ober hosts another open-door listening session for community members on Friday, January 26, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. No sign-ups necessary. Sessions take place at City Hall, this building, 10501 Southeast Main Street. For more information about these events and others, visit the city's homepage at milwaukeeoregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. Anyone have any other announcements? Okay. Then we will move on to special reports. And we have Kara Saylor from Lewis &amp; Clark College Law School, the Green Energy Institute, and Bob Jenks from the Citizens Utility Board. Is that the right name? Yeah. To talk to us about gas policy issues.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. For the record, my name is Bob Jenks. I'm Executive Director of Oregon Cub. We're an advocate for residential utility customers of the state. A lot of our work involves utility rate cases and utility planning processes. And those two things are related. Customers pay the costs associated with utility investments. One of the most important aspects of keeping rates affordable is making wise investments, or making our utilities make wise investments. A few years ago, we helped prevent PG from investing $500 million in a retrofit of the Boardman Coal Plant. Because setting the stage, and then doing that, set the stage to phase the plant out. This saved customers money, reduced pollution, and helped the utility position itself for a carbon-constrained world. It's important to acknowledge that the DEQ's climate protection plan was knocked out by the courts. It's important to also recognize it was on procedural grounds, which means the policy can still be implemented if DEQ goes through a new process. But the need to reduce carbon emissions from combustion and fossil fuels exists independently of the CPP. Cub works on both electric and gas issues. Oregon's electric utilities right now, customers are facing utility investments of literally hundreds of millions of dollars for wildfire prevention, hardening their systems to prevent wildfires. Wildfire mitigation is becoming a significant part of utility bills. We just saw a 20% increase, or 18% for PG. We'll see another one later this year that'll bring it over 20%. That's really a fair amount of that deals with wildfire costs. And we need to admit that wildfire costs were caused by climate change and caused by carbon emissions. This is a carbon-related cost coming home to roost on the utilities of the state. And loss of the CPP doesn't change the need to reduce those carbon emissions. What it does do is it throws out the rulebook. It's like being in a basketball game, and at halftime, somebody tells you the rules no longer apply. You still are in the game, you still want to win. But you don't know exactly how they even count the scores. That's the problem we're in right now. We know we need to decarbonize, we know we need to carbonize our economy. But without the CPP, the rules aren't there, but the need for action is there.
I'm going to interject just one moment. Is everyone familiar with the Climate Protection Program? Could it be helpful?
Yeah, that was the DEQ regulations that required Northwest, for the gas industry, which we deal with, it affected other industries. For the gas industry, it would have required a 50% reduction in emissions by 2035 and an 80% by 2050. So that was thrown out in the courts, but purely on procedural issues, saying DEQ didn't go through the right process to approve the rules. And so it does give DEQ the opportunity to try to fix that process, but it's unclear how long that will take.
And that happened just at the end of last year. So if you missed the news heading into the holidays, you might not have seen it. But the Oregon Court of Appeals did conclude that DEQ didn't follow some specific notice requirements. So it's relatively easy to fix. It's not a substantive problem with the rules.
And while emissions are falling from the electric system, they're increasing on the natural gas system. And primary reason they're increasing is the continued expansion of the gas system. This expansion creates emissions and requires infrastructure with a long useful life. The pipelines that deliver gas into people's homes have a useful life of more than 50 years. That means that there's expectation is that they'll be used for more than 50 years and that they'll be paid off over 50 years. So after 2070, we will still be paying for that fossil fuel infrastructure that's been put in today to deliver gas to people's homes. And that expansion creates problems. Obviously, the ability for customers to pay that off over 50 years as we see electrification increasingly happen on the gas system is going to be a fundamental problem. You're going to have a shrinking customer base, and they're going to have more and more costs of the pipeline system placed on them. And if history's any example, the folks who get harmed by those kinds of transitions more than anyone are low-income customers who can't afford heat pumps, can't afford to electrify themselves, and are stuck on a gas system that's getting increasingly expensive and expensive and expensive. And we're trying to get some programs in place to try to reverse that, put low-income customers at the front of the line. But there's a real danger of equity concerns over how this transition is going to happen. At the same time, utilities make money by financing infrastructure. Northwest Natural makes most of their profits from pipelines, from investing in financing pipelines. Our estimation is the new growth that happens every year makes about $25 million a year in profits for Northwest Natural. So for them, this is a significant issue. But as I said, the problem is the customer's on the hook for these investments really for the next 15 years. And in addition to the cost of the pipelines themselves, customers of the system will be responsible for the cost of carbon regulation. The DEQ regulations will come back, other places will put in regulations, the federal government at some point will have rational carbon regulations, and all of those are going to fall on the customers of the utility that's putting fossil fuels into our homes. And all these costs really are unknown. The cost of complying with the CPP, the cost of decarbonizing a natural gas system, is unknown. And part of the reason it's unknown is we can't figure out how they're going to do it. The plan Northwest Natural submitted to the PUC to describe how they're going to do it, the PUC rejected. Found that it wasn't reasonable, it wasn't credible in my mind. We testified that it wasn't credible. The PUC found that the price projections and quantity projections for the alternative fuels of renewable natural gas, hydrogen, synthetic methane, and all kinds of exotic things simply weren't realistic and didn't have any real basis for them. So at this point, there's no credible plan to decarbonize the gas system. And which brings me to Milwaukee. Communities like Milwaukee, think about infrastructure. A lot of what a city government does is plans for the city of the future. You plan for sewers, you plan for water, you plan for highways, you plan for all the things that you need to serve your community in the future. When we worked on the Boardman issue, it was clear that spending millions to preserve a coal plant wasn't a future-looking investment. It was a backwards-looking investment. Expanding the gas system in my mind is the same way. It's looking towards how we used to heat our homes. It's not looking to how in the future we're going to heat our homes. It's putting in massive amounts, millions of dollars of infrastructure to do the thing that we probably don't need in the future. And cities are well-positioned to lead on this issue because, again, they think about their community and what the infrastructure needs in that community. Northwest Natural just filed a rate case, and they're asking to increase rates by 18%. And they're asking to increase the subsidy that the company provides to developers to hook homes up to the system. They want to increase the incentive for developers of new buildings to put gas appliances in there and have those customers hooked up to the gas system. But that doesn't deal with the issue of how do the customers over the long term pay for that infrastructure? It doesn't answer those questions. It doesn't answer the question of how do you decarbonize the system? And that's really where our concern is. We really fundamentally think that we have to decarbonize our buildings, we have to decarbonize our economy. And the first place to start is not to keep expanding fossil fuel networks where they're unnecessary. And because of electrification, the ability to use heat pumps and other things in our homes, expanding the gas system really is not necessary at this point. So we'd urge you to, Kara can give you lots of information on the tools you have to go after the gas network and stop that expansion and all of that. And we seriously encourage you folks to take this seriously. You will be benefiting customers in your city, including the gas customers. Existing gas customers are going to be harmed by all the new costs that are going in and being piled on the system. Thank you. I'm happy to answer questions.
I wasn't, I'll say it again. We'll have Kara go ahead with her presentation, and then we'll take questions for both of you.
That's great. I'm happy to do that, although Bob is a hard act to follow. My name is Kara Saylor. I'm the Director and one of three Staff Attorneys at the Green Energy Institute. For those of you who may not be familiar with us, we are a climate policy and energy law organization housed in the Environmental Natural Resources and Energy Law Program at Lewis &amp; Clark Law School. We're primarily grant-funded, and we're doing this because we think this is important work to support cities in their efforts to decarbonize. So our mission, just so that you can hold that in your mind, is to develop smart and comprehensive strategies to support a swift and equitable transition to a clean energy grid. It may be useful to know that I started my career as a city attorney with partners in my law firm. And I know that your job is a hard one. I live on the other side of the tracks, maybe the wrong side of the tracks, in Celwood, and just think you all are doing a phenomenal job. So this evening, I'm going to take just a little more than 10 minutes to provide a brief overview of local authority to regulate natural gas. You'll see I use the phrase "layer cake" on my slide. For those of you involved in government, you know that our different layers of government actually operate more like a marble cake. But it is easier to sort of think about the levels of government and how you go about making decisions and thinking about avenues for action. So I'll touch on how local governments can bind themselves, how the state uniform building code preempts conflicting local laws, and how federal law preempts some local regulation of natural gas. And then I'll discuss what authority remains, focusing on GEI's concept ordinance. So we'll start with general principles of local authority in Oregon. You all know this, I'm speaking to the choir, but it's sometimes helpful to put us all on the same page. The U.S. Constitution provides power to the federal government and to the state governments, but it doesn't mention local authority. Instead, your local authority comes from the state of Oregon. And Oregon's constitution allowed city voters to confer authority on their city governments by enacting a home rule charter, which acts as the city's constitution. Milwaukee's charter grants it the maximum authority allowable by law rather than enumerating specific powers. So accordingly, Milwaukee is authorized to act to protect public health, safety, morals, and welfare, till license and to tax. And this is capacious authority. Since the charter authorizes action, the only remaining question is whether the law is preempted by state or federal law. So this slide describes the two flavors of preemption reflected in Oregon law. Notably, for those lawyers in the room, you'll see there's no Occupy the Field, which is a preemption principle in federal law. Instead, to preempt local action, a state law must clearly and unambiguously preempt the local government from acting. Or, under implied preemption, it must be impossible for the local and state law to operate at the same time. So you'll remember, maybe from my agenda, I listed franchise agreements and licensing ordinances. Those are ways that local governments can bind themselves. And licensing ordinances or right-of-way ordinances is likely the alternative, as I understand it, that the city of Milwaukee will move towards when the franchise agreement with Northwest Natural comes to an end in February of this year. And so I did a quick review of the city's licensing ordinance, and it indicates to me that the city may exercise its police power without restrictions in that ordinance. The most common method, and this is when you hear about electrification actions or regulations of natural gas, and the most common that you'll hear about are building codes. That's what's used most commonly around the nation, particularly in California. But as I mentioned, any local law seeking to promote building electrification needs to avoid regulating in an area that's already controlled by federal or state law. And when we're talking about building codes, it's important to know that Oregon law expressly preempts local governments from adopting ordinances that impose different requirements than the state building codes do. So you'll see on this slide that it wasn't always this way. In 1978, the Oregon Supreme Court actually read the then-applicable law to create a floor allowing local governments to exceed the building code. I draw your attention to the case because it's still published and available, and it might be confusing for you to come across it. This legislature subsequently amended the law to clarify that no municipality is permitted to enact an ordinance, quote, "relating to the same matters encompassed by the state building code, but which provides different requirements," unless permitted to do so by the Building Code Division. You're not falling asleep yet, so this is good. We're moving on to EPCA, which is the federal law. It stands for the Energy Policy and Conservation Act. This is a federal law that preempts any state or local regulation, quote, "concerning the energy efficiency, energy use, or water use of a covered product." And "covered product" is a defined term. It includes equipment like furnaces, HVAC systems, gas ranges, and water heaters. There is a building code exception in EPCA. That exception allows energy efficiency or energy use standards so long as you meet seven explicit statutory criteria. So Washington's state building code is an example of an EPCA-compliant building code. You might have heard about EPCA because it was in the news following the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals' decision, its ruling on Berkeley's gas ban. So in April, the Ninth Circuit issued a ruling finding that Berkeley's prohibition on natural gas piping in buildings was preempted by EPCA. The Ninth Circuit held that EPCA preempts state and local standards that interfere with, quote, "the end user's ability to use installed covered products at their intended final destination." This interpretation was broader than the Department of Energy or stakeholders expected. Berkeley did file a petition for en banc review over the summer, and actually just today, Mayor Beatty, the Ninth Circuit issued an amended opinion. Now, I submitted my slides to the city this morning before I knew about that decision, but I went back, and the quotes are still accurate. The decision is amended. It actually narrows and clarifies some pieces that were concerning to stakeholders and the city. But the amended opinion still contains this reasoning. It again concludes that EPCA preempts Berkeley's gas ban. So at the end of the day, in the Ninth Circuit, which includes the state of Oregon, no local government may prohibit natural gas piping within new buildings from the point of delivery at the gas meter. So what remains? Local governments may manage how, when, and where utilities use public rights of way. They have authority to act to protect public health and safety, and they may use existing processes to regulate natural gas so long as they keep their local authority in mind and consider existing state and federal barriers. So you'll see a few of those options listed here. I'm happy to dive into any of them at a later time if any of you seek to know more. But I will spend my remaining time describing just the one method that is being evaluated in a variety of ways and in a variety of places, regulating emissions from natural gas combustion. So a few years ago, GEI began contemplating ways in which local governments could stop digging the hole, right? What Bob was describing is happening. Stop expanding natural gas fossil fuel infrastructure. And the Berkeley-style ordinance was just one such option at the time, but we knew it wasn't ideal for all cities. So we looked at New York City's building emissions ordinance enacted in 2019, which limits carbon dioxide emissions from large buildings. And then we also learned that air quality management districts in California and in states like Texas and Utah prohibit the sale or installation of appliances and equipment that emit high levels of nitrogen oxides. GEI took these ideas and combined them and created a concept ordinance that sets a NOx emissions limit on residential buildings. So why NOx? NOx impacts air quality by contributing to smog, fine particulate formation, visibility impairment, and acid rain. Jurisdictions outside of Oregon already regulate NOx from appliances, so there are low NOx appliances available and accepted testing protocols. And NOx is produced from fuel combustion. So limiting NOx can simultaneously drive down fossil fuel emissions. Our concept ordinance leaves the pollution budget in the hands of the local government. So depending on the risk calculation, the local government could set a building's budget anywhere from zero to an amount that would allow a low NOx water heater and a low NOx furnace or anywhere in between. The concept ordinance also allows local governments to engineer the ordinance to fit the city's circumstances. Maybe the city wants to just start with new residential buildings. Maybe the city wants to cover additions or substantial retrofits. So we've purposely attempted to simplify the process, especially for a small city with low NOx. limited staff. Other cities in Oregon have also considered how to administer the ordinance easily and have further refined it, and conversations with those folks will prove fruitful. So right now, the ordinance is set to require a notice of construction, listing all the appliances that have the potential to emit NOx. A clear building pollution budget helps the developer understand how to stay under the pollution limit, using EPA-published emissions rates. A report following construction completion confirms whether the building has remained under the budget. And penalties may be tied to the city's general penalty authority, or revocation of a certificate of occupancy is also a permitted punishment. So are there any barriers to the city's authority to enact the concept ordinance? First, we think about Milwaukee's charter and ordinances. They should be closely reviewed. My examination found no obstacles, but your city attorney would have a better idea about that. What about the state building code? The ordinance does not impose any different requirements from the state building code, since the building code does not address emissions. What about DEQ? Doesn't DEQ have the exclusive authority to control air pollution in Oregon? The answer is no. Remembering our preemption analysis, the air pollution statutes say nothing about preempted local policymaking in this area. With respect to implied preemption, DEQ does not regulate emissions from residential buildings, so the laws would not conflict with each other. What about federal law? The Federal Clean Air Act gives states and local governments a role in enacting emission standards for sources of air pollution. This includes the authority to enact emission standards for newly-installed fossil fuel appliances, like furnaces and water heaters. And EPC does not address emissions from appliances. So that's it from me. There's my contact information. Feel free to reach out to me. And then we published a guide in March, just prior to the April Berkeley decision, but it has some good information in the guide on our website about local authority to regulate natural gas. Thank you.
Questions? And I'll look to Councilor Stavros George, if she would like to start with any questions.
Thank you. Actually, while you still have your slides up, I was wondering if you could go back to the slide that had the states listed?
I've lost it.
Excuse me. I guess I'm wondering if you can go back through kind of the intersection of authority, states versus cities. And I guess, you know, one of the things that comes to mind for me is that counties have public health authority through their role as a board of health. We don't have a similar board function like that at a municipal level. But I'm interested to hear a bit about your interpretation of those different levels of jurisdiction.
Yeah, I mean, the county does have explicit statutory authority to address health issues. So Clackamas County could act, but I think it's unlikely. I mean, it certainly doesn't preclude the city from acting. We often see this happening with Multnomah County and the city of Portland. They'll sometimes pair together in adopting a policy, or sometimes one of the city of Portland will try it out in their jurisdiction, and then Multnomah County will like it. They also have a little bit sometimes of competition. So there's nothing that precludes the city from enacting an ordinance that improves the health of your citizens.
I guess what I've seen in the partnership with Multnomah County and the city of Portland is that if it is health-related, that the county would lead that piece of it, and perhaps maybe the implementation would start within a city jurisdiction like Portland. There are also land use codes that, you know, kind of follow that sort of same pattern. And I agree with you that it's unlikely that Clackamas County would act on something like this. But I guess I'm also kind of wondering, you know, if you have individual jurisdictions moving forward in different directions, perhaps those are not all the same definition or mechanism, then would that be disjointed at a certain level? You know, to aggregate up to a certain point, it seems like it would be ideal. In some of the examples that you gave, I think it was on the different slide when you were talking about New York, it seemed like those were at state levels? And I'm wondering, you know, like, would it make more sense for something to be implemented statewide?
I think there's no question it would make more sense. The problem is that we don't have a lot of state ambition. And there is some capture, too, industry capture in the legislature. And I think Bob has much more experience with that than I do. We don't do legislative work directly. In terms of working with the county, I think it would be wonderful if Clackamas County would be interested in taking something like this on. I think it's unlikely. I think you are right, that Multnomah County and the city of Portland do have sometimes a good relationship like that, where they'll let Multnomah County take the lead. Multnomah County has a lot of ambition with respect to health, using their health authority. In terms of whether there's a problem in sort of disjointed policy adoption, I think it is a policy question for you all, right? To decide whether, you know, whether you just want to act because somebody needs to act and inform and inspire other communities around the state to also act, which at that point would put it back in the hands of the state, right? Because they would see that there's ambition and desire to move the ball forward in this way. So, you know, I agree that it's a hard policy call for you to make. It seems to me like the right one for the reasons that Bob suggested with respect to saving money, but then in addition, health, safety, welfare, meeting climate goals, starting to take action.
Right. And just on the state issue, I mean, I worked for probably three years on cap and trade. It's probably the largest issue I was working on. And we had the votes to pass it in the legislature. The walkouts prevented it from coming to the floor. It's hard to get state policy. It's hard to do that. Leadership on a local level can make a real difference. When the Berkeley ordinance passed, I hadn't heard about it until it passed, and it's like, wow, that's amazing. But in weeks, literally dozens of cities in California were teeing up similar things. And it spread then around the country, and you folks will keep that up here. So I do think local leadership makes a difference, finding units of government that says, this is a problem, other folks aren't willing to solve it, but we're going to take it on because it needs to be, I think is really good for democracy and healthy borders. If we have too many conflicting ordinances with different standards, that's what will compel the state to say, okay, let's set a baseline. Let's solve that problem with some consistent regulation at a state level. But if we don't have any regulation at the state level, it's hard to start there at times, so.
Now, I'll just add that actually, it's interesting. After Berkeley adopted its ordinance, then California adopted its REACH code and not allowed, actually, the cities to exceed the building code, the state building code. They have a different building code, right? There's no preemption down there. But that was interesting, right? Because there was a desire at the local level to act. And then similarly, you know, just thinking about how difficult it is to get anything passed through the legislature here in Oregon, I'll point to the REACH code here, which was actually just going to be a voluntary REACH code, right? So cities that wanted to exceed the building code, which a REACH code has already been vetted by the building code division, it's on the books, it's now explicitly voluntary for developers to use, they're not interested, right? But cities that wanted to require the development in their cities to meet that REACH code, wanted the ability to do that, failed twice. And this year, nobody was interested in having it taken up again, right? And so that's just a very small, you know, demand that buildings be built better.
Counselor Coasterbody?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation and for the information as well. I really appreciate it. And mentioning the local leadership part, right? Because, you know, it's the match that lights the bigger flame, right? And I see us as the match at some point. And, you know, when leadership's lacking at a greater level, it's our responsibility to fill that void. So I've been a fan of electrification, of moving that way. I wish I knew more about it when we first put in a gas furnace in my house. But I am a little, this stuff is not really what I'm concerned about, because I feel like we can, you know, whether it's right-of-way, increasing the licensing fee on the right-of-way, there's a way that we can maneuver things. And if that's the way we have to go in order for us to raise additional funds to combat them still being here in our right-of-ways, then so be it. As you've expressed, it seems like we have plenty of options on the table legally. My concern, though, is this recent increase from PGE, as well as Northwest Natural that they had. And where I'm, this is the lens that I look at, right? Affordability for the average person, what the cost is, right? And I don't understand how, you know, PGE, when you look at their, when you look at PGE and Northwest Natural, and you look at their net profits from last year, why are they increasing everyone's rate? PGE had a net profit of 200-something million, but we're having to pay an additional 18%? How is that helping us transition? How is that helping the average family transition? So that's what's difficult, because I see what they're trying to do. They're trying to convert everything, they're trying to do the right thing, but it's hard when you're putting in that conglomerate of profits and you're asking us to pay more and to get on the bandwagon. I mean, it's tough, right? It's really hard to do that. And now, with that increase, which I found out about recently, and then us potentially increasing our right-of-way, it's just going to pass on to the consumer, to constitute the consumer, the person who calls it home. So I'm good with this, but what I'm not good with is giving PGE a monopoly, basically. And as much as I respect and appreciate the utility board, I feel like enough wasn't done to prevent such a massive increase, especially with another increase coming. You said later this year, they're going to do it again.
Right, just a couple percent.
I mean, but still, we're looking at over 20%. The average cost of your electric goes, determining on the season, is over $100. You know, plus you had multiple levies come in, and you got all these budget cuts. I mean, you know, we're putting it on the public, and then we're also asking them to support our transition while making it harder for them to afford it. So I'm all for this, but I really do, what is, what's PGE going to do to prevent that? What's, you know, how are we, how can we as leaders also protect our residents here, people who live here, from price gouging and over costs and, you know, additional fees? And I mean, we're nickeling and diming the hell out of people right now. And this doesn't make things easier on anybody. Where does that come into play? Because I see, I don't see the transition as an issue. We're all going there, right? I mean, you just said it's smart, so many cities in California, Oregon as well. I mean, I'm gung-ho for this, but I see what's coming on the horizon with back-to-back increases from our, you know, only two utilities people rely on. At what point does it stop? Because we're saying that the fires is a cause, too. So are we assuming that once we get things more regulated and under control in terms of, you know, climate, in terms of the rate of fires, are they going to then lower their rates? Probably not, right? So how do we protect our citizens? We can protect them from gas, but how do we protect them from the same thing we're telling them is going to be better for them, but going to cost them a lot more?
Right, right. And, you know, the most disappointing thing for me this last year was the PGE rate case. There was, I mean, it would have been higher if they had gotten what they wanted. They wanted to increase their profit margins, they wanted a whole bunch of things like that that we were able to fight and stop, we were able to hold them accountable for mismanaging their wind farm and having a blade fly off and almost hit a farmer. So there's a lot of, there were some things in there, some things in there that we thought were major victories and good for us, but the overall increase, this is the second-largest increase they've had. The largest one was in the California energy crisis, when the whole world was, the whole Western energy grid was melting down. This is not something that's affordable, it's not sustainable, we can't clap in pieces like this. A piece of it was fire, but I don't want to, I want to be careful, and I'm not suggesting that fire is the cause of 20% increase. The fire was a... Right, but it's a partial part of the problem. I think, and I think PGE, in my mind, they're an interesting company because they're, I think they do want to do the right thing, but their appetite is much bigger than I think their customers' budgets are. And they want to do too many things. They want to be a leader in EVs, a leader in this, a leader in that, a leader in everything. And quite frankly, I think that's problematic, and my suggestion to them is oftentimes, don't do that. Even though I like that idea, I don't think this is affordable. Spending $300 million on ED infrastructure in one year does not make rational sense because of the rate impacts in it, even if it jumps just where we need to get to the climate. So we have to go at a pace, we have to look at this, we have to look at the rate impacts. And I'm frustrated with PGE, I'm even more frustrated with Pacific Power, because they're having the same sort of rate increases, but they're not making the progress on decarbonization. It's, I'm not, so I agree completely with that, and it's a hard thing to do. Oregon communities used to have the choice of going to public power and creating a publicly-owned electric utilities an alternative. The utilities have made that almost impossible. It's not inherently, it's not completely impossible, but they made it almost impossible. Bonneville's made it possible to get contracts for Bonneville at preference rates for new publics if they're very large. So it's, yeah, no, I completely get where you're coming from, I agree with it. It keeps me up at night. The one good thing we did get out of the rate case was for low-income customers who are eligible for discounts, and we increased those discounts because we didn't want the discount being lost by the rate increase. And we're trying to lower people's energy burdens. So the folks that are economically challenged in Milwaukee will get some additional benefits out of this, but it's not enough, quite frankly. They're still going to have a harder time. These are big bills that people have to try to swallow. So, and I would love to, I'd love to see them come down as costs come down. Some of this was temporary price increases that came out of the supply chain and all that kind of stuff. It should, just as gas prices have come down, some of this may come down, but I don't count on PGE to give a whole lot of rate decreases. I haven't seen those in the 30 years I've been involved in this business. So I share your frustration as a customer of PGE, and I share your frustration even more as somebody who tries to advocate on behalf of all their residential customers and keep bills affordable, so.
But I'll just note that we shouldn't be paying for two utilities to decarbonize, right? Everybody needs electricity. So we are going to be paying for that. Not everybody needs to have natural gas, right? So we can eliminate that as a burden. And the other thing I'll say is really important, and the city is already on this and does such a good job with educating citizens, but the opportunities for energy efficiency, right, to bring those rates down, because those benefits can really help people.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your comments. And, you know, that's, in all my years, which isn't very, I like to think I'm young, but damn, I've never seen any time prices go up when it comes to utilities, groceries, things like that, like necessities, they never come down. Fees never come down, right? It's usually always one trajectory. So I appreciate you fighting for all of us, really. I'd love to be a fly on those discussions, too. My other thing is also with the transition and transferring over, like you mentioned, and I'm glad you mentioned that, we don't need two utilities, right? So the other side of it would be accelerating the opportunity people have to transition, right? So funding for that as well, right, is something that could be used, because the sooner you get somebody off the gas, the sooner they're not paying for two utilities, right? That's the idea. I'm assuming that there will be programs also through PGE to help with the transition for those that can't, because, you know, I've mentioned this several times, talking to a lot of people, that tax credits don't help those that don't have cash upfront, right? That's the whole thing that may charge ahead, rebate program, so unique and so successful. I was one of them. I traded in a V6 pickup truck for a little Chevy Bolt, right? But it was like the best idea I've ever done, aside from marriage and my kids. So like those kind of things, being able to transition, if there was money, funds upfront that people could have access to for an $8,000 heat pump or whatever, you know, that makes a huge difference. It would probably speed up the transition. Has there been much discussion on that? Because I know, again, federal Because I know, again, federal and state, there's that stuff, but, I mean, we just talked about waiting on those.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we did just, uh, uh, got an agreement from PG to increase energy efficiency funding through the ETO, uh, uh, by a pretty good jump in the goals for, for that energy efficiency. It's been frustrating because that would have, it's cost effective by about $200 million in, in the analysis. But PG was saying, well, you know, our bills are going up really high. Maybe we shouldn't do all of this. And it's like that, you don't, that's not where you should script. There are very, very clear places they can cut. That's not one of them where, where they should be cutting. So, so we did just get that agreement. So that will, we will be seeing expanded offerings, expanded offerings on heat pumps and things like that. And then the federal government, the Inflation Reduction Act, did put tax credits in place, but also put a rebate program in place that's just taken time to get off the ground. ODO is in charge of it here in Oregon, the State Department of Energy is setting up a program to do that. We've been monitoring that. We're trying to encourage them to really target low income customers. I talked about trying to find ways to put low income customers at the front of the line for electrification rather than the back of the line. And we think the ODO program has the potential to really help do that. Particularly when you combine that with the fact that utilities, the low income discounts, we know, we know who are the low income gas customers. We know who are the lower electric customers. And we can target those folks. ODO should be able to get to us, uh, that data, and we should be able to target those folks for the rebates. And the rebates, these are really generous rebates that are coming. Because of it, they won't go that far. But for the people who can get them, they're going to be really generous. So that, that program, I think, is, is, we're trying to maximize that. Will, will make a big difference.
And I'll just mention that Energy Trust of Oregon is very cognizant of the need to braid investments, right? So federal, state, utility, but then also through the climate protection program, there is a piece of that program that requires, that allows natural gas utilities to make community climate investments, which have to be greenhouse gas emission reductions. So there's money coming there. So, you know, I think, I do think our Energy Trust of Oregon is doing a good job thinking about how to make those, those funds, those funds available. And ODO is also going to be developing a one stop shop, right? So it can be clear to folks because the, you know, managing the, the confusing maze, right, of rebates is just not something anyone wants to spend their free time doing. So we need to make it easy for them.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much for mentioning the accessibility part.
Counselor Massey?
Thanks for the presentation. Has, has any city, um, working on this concept ordinance, to your knowledge?
Yes. The city of Ashland has been working on it just in the past, I would say six to eight months. And I believe this month intends to produce a menu of options. Its climate committee will be meeting and presenting a menu of options, including something like our concept ordinance to their city council. So we'll have an idea towards the end of this month, beginning of next, which, which decarbonization effort the city of Ashland will move with.
So they don't have an ordinance yet?
They do not have an ordinance yet.
So one follow up question is, what is the risk to Oregon for being the first out of the gate?
The risk to Oregon for.
To Ashland.
To Ashland. So there's always a litigation risk. I think our gas utilities are fighting for their lives. We hope that by working collaboratively and collectively with folks across the country, we have identified the pitfalls and hopefully avoid them. But litigation is, is a possibility. The, I, I would say that's, you know, they, they are keenly aware of the need to bring their community along. Certainly having conversations from the beginning about the importance of this transition, what it will look like for people, addressing concerns, discussing the costs is incredibly important. And so they have held two listening sessions with their city council and with the Climate Action Committee and youth to hear those concerns. So, so, you know, other than, other than that, I, they have a different gas utility. They have a Vista. They don't have Northwest Natural. So it's hard to, it's hard to know what the response will be from, from a Vista. Does that answer your question, counselor?
It does.
What other risks are you thinking about?
You know, I would. I, I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, that it's a possibility. I think it's a probability.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Council President agrees.
Thank you for your presentation. I would just piggyback on what Counselor Kazra Badi talked about. I mean, PGE makes billions of dollars and typically low income folks don't own their homes and don't get those rebates. And so, and it's, I mean, let's be realistic. It's low income folks and folks of color. And, you know, just stepping on their backs so they could get more money. You know, I, as you said, that they want to be a leader in this, a leader in that, a leader in this, which is all really good. I look at it through a lens of a teacher, whereas like, if you give teachers four, four new curriculums, we can't get good at one. So we're all really mediocre at four new curriculums. So I, I would hope that PG just focuses on one thing and to get really good at that one thing as opposed to trying to do a bunch. But it's really difficult as I sit here and I'm like Googling revenue for PG and it's like $2.6 billion. What are you doing with that $2.6 billion? Like help out the folks that need to be helped to, to move this stuff forward. So I, I support this all the way. It's just really hard. PG is just raking in the dough.
I think it would be helpful for PGE to hear from council, right? And to hear what their plans are. The other thing I'll mention is that I know folks are keenly aware of the need to help renters. So ODO actually has just initiated and is now finalizing rules for rebates to landlords for income qualified tenants to receive heat pumps and heat pump water heaters. So, so, you know, programs can be arranged to address the need. And if it's successful, I expect that there will be a desire to replicate the program.
So on the ODO incentives and the one stop shop, I was hearing, you know, probably this time last year, that it was going to be out by the end of the year. So that didn't happen. What's our current timeline for when that's expected to be ready?
I think, I mean, I will just say that in ODO's defense, they are one of actually first agencies out the gate in terms of applying for the IRA funds. So they're going to be six months to a year before any other state with a finalized program. In terms of the one stop shop, I, I, I don't, I didn't see it in their newsletter this morning, but I'm happy to follow up with you on that, Mayor Beatty, because I know, I think they're probably waiting to finalize the program details for the IRA money and then, and then make it clear what's available on their one stop shop.
Yes, a part of, part of the holdup was the federal government had to write the rules after the IRA passed. And so the federal government has taken the, the, a, a large chunk of the time. It's, it's not where the, uh, uh, why I, I blame state bureaucracies all the time for screwing things up. I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair in this, in this case to say ODO is going, dragging the feet. I think they're excited about it, want to make it happen. And, and 2024, keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, they're champing at the bit, I can tell you.
Well, and for people watching out there, ODO is Oregon Department of Energy.
Thank you.
Um, we use a lot of acronyms and we need to like explain what they are. The, uh, I mean, we as a city have some kind of agreement or some kind of relationship with Community Energy Project. And we maybe need to have them come talk to us at some point. I mean, I, I do want to, I do feel like there's more we can be doing to try and, and maybe not since this one stop shop hasn't, hasn't opened yet. But at the point where that becomes available, like, do you think there's more we can be doing to try and connect our, our residents to those resources? My one other question was, you mentioned Northwest Natural seeking an increase in the subsidies for developers. And didn't they just last year, didn't the PUC move the other way and reduce how much subsidies could go to developers?
The PUC, uh, last year, uh, ordered Northwest Natural to reduce the, uh, reduce them each of three years to the point that they were cut in half. So cut them in half over three years. And part of the, we are the ones that suggested do it over a little bit of time. So because developers are out there, they're expecting that, that check. And you don't want to, we've got a housing crisis, so we didn't want to do anything to interfere with the housing markets. Phase it in over a few years. So that, and, and, and that was something that we were really hard on in that rate case. Northwest Natural doesn't like that. And so now they're going to come on and, and they're going to make, try to argue that it should go the other direction. And, uh, uh, I've got a staff person chomping at the bits for that fight. So that will.
Okay.
We will, we will be taking that on and, and challenging that. And, and the rate case was just filed December 28th. I was on vacation. Today's the first day opened. The place I started reading was, was about the subsidy for, uh, uh, growth. Because to, to us, that's, that really is putting millions and millions of dollars into, into the ground that customers are going to have to pay later and doesn't, doesn't make rational sense, so.
Great.
And I'll just note that the Public Utility Commission would like to hear from the city. So, you know, if at any point the city wants to express concern about rate increases, feel free to reach out to either one of us. We, we are in front of the PUC all the time, the Public Utility Commission. And, um, and I do know that they are interested in knowing what's happening in the real world from.
Well, I would, um, yeah, I mean, give us a ti, I mean, not tonight, but send us a timeline or, or the, I mean, I know the CUB publishes their newsletter and has a lot of that about how to weigh in and when. But yeah, kind of.
Yeah, you can rely on Eclipse newsletter for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. Well, I know we have a couple of people who want to comment and we will do that as part of our regular public comment. So we thank you guys for coming and, uh, giving us a lot of food for thought. So I will move on to community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business. Before we begin, is there any follow up from the December 5th or December 19th? Community comments, be sober. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card. I have two, and I also have a note of one person on Zoom who wishes to comment. If you are on Zoom, for, if you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand reaction to alert staff that you wish to speak. And when instructed to begin, click the microphone option to unmute yourself. If you're calling in through Zoom on a telephone and would like to comment, dial star nine to raise your hand. You may also submit a comment via email to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, this is not the time for discussion, but the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow up. So I would invite up Greer Ryan first. It doesn't just hit the red, I think. Hit the little button so that the red comes on.
Hope you can hear me. Mayor Beatty, city counselors, uh, thank you so much for having me here. My name's Greer Ryan. I've spoke to, in front of some of the council before, at least in my previous role as a climate, energy and buildings, uh, policy advocate for a regional nonprofit. But I changed jobs, so now I'm just here as a Milwaukee resident. And very excited to be here in that capacity. Very excited to have moved to Milwaukee this past year because I was really, first of all, kind of fell in love with the city in my time living in Southeast Portland and getting to visit. I'm really inspired by this council and by the work that the local government has done to move forward on climate and energy issues. I, it's just a beautiful place and I'm grateful to you all. That being said, I've been thinking a lot about climate delayism recently, which is known as kind of the new climate denial. Government leaders aren't necessarily saying climate change doesn't exist or it's not important to act on. But there's a lot of, you know, delay tactics that are imposed both by industry, by individuals. It's scary to take action if you don't know what the consequences are, or if you think that there might be consequences, um, no matter what you do, right? It's easier to not take action. I feel that in a lot of ways in my life, especially with, um, money. You know, it's, it's very hard to put your money into something if you don't know if it'll pay off when money is scarce, when times are hard. In my, in my house, when I moved in, I was so excited that most of it was electric because I've been doing electrification work for a long time or, you know, related utility and climate work. And I wanted to electrify. I did not want gas in my house. I was scared of the public health risks. I was scared of, um, potential risks for leaks, um, because that's very real. Carbon monoxide poisoning from gas systems is very real. And sure enough, once I moved in, we had someone come and look at my gas furnace, which was pretty old, because the house is pretty old, and it had a crack in it. That was not repairable. The guy said, we have to red tie this, meaning, you know, it's out of commission, you got to replace it. But wink, wink, nudge, nudge, we don't have any say in what you do afterwards. You could just take that off and turn it back on and use it. It's, you know, it's a little crack, he said, um, which is not comforting. That is a system that is not working with, you know, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, go ahead if you can't afford to replace your heating source to just keep using a broken one. That could poison you. I was, I was lucky. I got to take advantage of some of the incentives, including the tax incentive through the IRA to replace it with a heat pump. I was already wanting to get a heat pump in there so I could have some cooling because heat pumps do both and they do so super efficiently. If you haven't already heard my spiel about, it's not just mine, lots of people give it, about how cool heat pumps are. Dang it, ran out of time. Just to say, I'm sitting here grateful to you all and we cannot delay. And the double, the double bill of the gas and electric is so much worse than having just an electric bill. We got to get that electric system and that transition right. We have to put our money into that. And PGE is not perfect. None of the big utilities are. But Northwest Natural is like the big bad in this area. And so we have to have priorities and vision and just go for it. Sorry to go over time and I appreciate you all.
All right. I don't know what I do.
Hi, Mayor, Council and staff. My name is Anne Pernick. I'm with Safe Cities at Stand Up Earth and I'm a resident of Portland, Oregon. And I just wanted to thank Bob Akira for your presentation tonight and thank you all for the thoughtful questions and comments that you've made. And, and how you're seeing the intersections between this energy transition and all the other things that you're responsible for. And I just want to note a couple of other things that intersect, just to note that there are several other important issues that come up. In terms of the costs, there is the energy efficiency of heat pumps versus gas furnaces and versus a more traditional electric radiant heat. I also want to bring up the opportunity of developing local renewables as a way to bring energy into the grid. And hopefully lots of local renewable projects will start helping bring our costs down. There are also the many health and safety issues of having gas in buildings from asthma to also leaks. And I also want to bring up the cooling that comes with the heat pumps. So appreciate all the nuance that you all are bringing into the conversation and just want to make sure that you also keep your eyes on the nuance of this transition and the many benefits that come with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have one person online or do we have more than one by now?
At this point, we have two hands raised online. And before I do to them, I just want to report that since the meeting began, council received an email with a written comment on this topic, climate solutions, via David Van Hoff. That's will be included on the record and council has reported a copy of that.
Okay, great.
So the first speaker on Zoom is Dylan Plummer with the Sierra Club. Dylan, can you hear us?
Yep. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I hear you fine.
Great. Mayor Beatty and members of the Milwaukee City Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Dylan Plummer and I'm a senior field organizing strategist with Sierra Club, working specifically on building electrification here in Oregon and Washington. On behalf of our members and supporters in Milwaukee and across the state and the region, I'm here to strongly encourage the council to pursue policies to transition homes and buildings to clean electricity and to increase fees on the use of fossil fuels in the city, specifically with the right of way ordinance that Kara mentioned earlier, in order to help fund Milwaukee's work to achieve its climate goals and to expand incentives for the clean energy transition. Like you all have heard already, we strongly believe that the city has a responsibility to take action at the local level, not because the city has, you know, failed to take action, but but because in fact, Milwaukee has really demonstrated its leadership and we see that Milwaukee really pushing the envelope is going to be key to seeing more action at the state and federal level on this critical issue. It's already been over a year since the council first passed its resolution to pursue electrification policy. And in that time, our communities have continued to be impacted by the climate crisis with, you know, 2023 being the hottest year on record and probably the coolest year for the rest of our lives. We cannot continue to delay taking action to reduce emissions and protect our environment. And we absolutely cannot allow big fossil fuel corporations like Northwest Natural to convince us into inaction through threats of litigation. Nothing that's worth doing is ever easy. And we see this as a critical, critical step that will have, you know, significant benefits, not just for our climate, not just for our public health, but for consumers. And really, again, isn't about transitioning existing buildings, right? It's about beginning to plan for that longer term transition and ensuring that we're thinking far ahead so that we can make sure that the transition is equitable and specifically protects low income, renters and renters. Thank you very much for for considering this and for all of your work on the issue and your work on climate leadership and economic justice issues.
Great. Thank you. And.
Can you hear us, Breach Collective? And can you state your name and city of residence?
Hi, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Right. Yeah, sorry. I didn't realize my my Zoom name was was my organizational name. But my name is Danny Noonan and I am a climate and energy strategist with the organization Breach Collective, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Breach Collective is based in Portland and Eugene, and I myself am a resident of Eugene, Oregon. I've presented to this council before. I just wanted to jump on and wish you all a happy new year and also just talk a little bit about the the topic of electrification. So I had previously submitted on behalf of over 30 organizations throughout the state of Oregon, a letter encouraging the city of Milwaukee to move forward with ambitious electrification policy. So if you've yet to read that letter, or if you would like to reread it, I strongly encourage you to do so. I also wanted to reiterate or sort of lend my voice to Greer Ryan's point that essentially the delaying action, whether that's because of the specter of litigation risk or because this council feels like another city or the county or or the state should be the the first mover on electrification, is exactly what the fossil fuel industry would like you to do. The industry knows that we are in an energy transition in this state. And if they can't prevent that transition outright, they at least want it to be as slow as possible so that they can preserve their profits for as long as possible. There's also the issue that if this transition doesn't occur in a deliberate way with governments like Milwaukee setting a policy direction locally and incentivizing that transition for its constituents, then that energy transition is going to be worse from an equity standpoint than if the city simply lets the status quo, you know, take effect. And then just as a last point, we're simply not moving fast enough in reducing our emissions at any level in this state to play a role, an equitable role in staving off catastrophic global heating, both in Milwaukee and in the wider state region and indeed world. So my hope is that, you know, more than 12 months after this council passed a resolution committing it to taking action electrification, that this council does not delay any further when there are clear actions and pathways forward to take those actions that members of the community and organizations and city staff have presented to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, do we have any further?
No more emails and no more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. No more yellow cards. All right. Well, with that, we will move on with the rest of our agenda. Appreciate those folks who came in. If you want to stay, of course you are welcome to stay. But we will move on with the rest of our agenda tonight. And we do have conversations to have about what happens come February. But we won't be having those tonight. Okay, tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council December 5th, 2023 work session and December 5th, 2023 regular session, a resolution establishing the 2024 city council meeting schedule, a resolution designating the 2024 papers of record, a resolution authorizing a public improvement contract with T. Bailey, Inc. to provide construction services for the Stanley Reservoir Improvement Project. Does any member of council wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None heard. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next item is the Llewellyn Safe Routes to School Grant update by city engineer Jen Garbley and Llewellyn resident Nick Delanzo. And I maybe Stefan Lashbrook as well. Yeah, please come forward. There's room for all three of you. You have to split up, but there's room for all three of you if you want to come up.
Thank you, councillor, for having us today. I have two gentlemen with me and they're here to ask for your support for another Safe Routes to School grant. So I'm going to hand it over to Phil and Stefan.
Good evening. I'm Nick Delanzo. On behalf of the Llewellyn neighborhood and the Llewellyn NDA, and the last time we met, we were at the old place and these are some sweet digs. Got it, Nick. But what I'm here to do is to ask for the green light. And that means a letter of support. And Scott, does the council have the you would have that letter of support in front of you? And that letter of support allows the city to go forward with an application to send submit to Safe Routes to School. And so that it's self explanatory. It's pretty if I need to, I can read it. But if not, you can read it at your leisure. What I'm doing is is giving you a quick outline as to where we are. I've been trying to pin down the scheduling application timetable from ODOT and that's kind of like herding cats right now. But the best I can come up with is that the application will be opening later this month and into February. Now, there's two parts. Part one is open for six weeks. And then that's submitted to a body called the Safe Routes Advisory Council. They vet the applications. Then there's a month of darkness and then the second part is opens up after that month. So we're looking at into the second quarter of 2024. Grants would be awarded in about this time, 2025. Now, we'd have some Christmas presents to distribute because in November, the council met, the advisory council met and they they threw us some really sweet trinkets. One was they went from a cap of $2 million to a cap of $3 million. When we put this together, this plan, it was at $2 million. So when we put this application together, Stefan and I, along with city council, city staff, we're going to be putting together a rough draft of the application. We want to think in terms of $3 million rather than two. The existing the existing application, I'm sorry, the existing projects are focusing on Logos and on Stanley. On Logos, there's going to be crosswalks, upgrades to the signage for students right in the vicinity of Sethwell Sethwelling. The capstone for all this will be a rapid flashing beacon at Logos and Stanley. And then down Stanley itself, there are going to be some upgrades to the pavement, drainage, and ADA curb requirements and fog lines and stop bars. What this increase in funding does, it opens the door to other projects that weren't prioritized here but can be. And that if my my back and napkin math works, I'd figure it's about another $400,000 because it includes a 30% contingency fund. That includes for inflation and supply chain issues and the attacks on red cheese shipping will is a supply chain issue that will affect us down the road by this time next year. So the other little tidbit that came through is has to be approved by OTC. And that is that for city, the the council said for the cities that are less than 25,000 Milwaukee, there's no match. So we was before it was like it was a 40% match, but with the demographics we have, we bought we got that down to 20%. Now we're down to zero. But OTC has to approve that. So those are some real favorable guidelines going down the road. This letter will then allow us to go forward with the application and get that in in the pipeline. I don't have a template for this year's application. So I'm working off the last last year's sheet of music. So it's it's we're just going to be working on problem statements, locations, some of the high points of the project. And that's so I'd like to ask for your support for this letter so we can proceed with application.
Oops. Thank you. I had a couple clarifying questions. So the application, you're doing the application and then it'll be vetted through the staff? Is that how it works?
Yeah, we'll send Stefan and I will be putting it putting it together, submit it to staff. And that's for part one. Part two has more details and it's more engineering design. So once we get through part one by the advisory council, they'll say, hey, you're good to go. Go ahead with part two. They encourage you to do part two, but due to time constraints, it may be feasible just to do one and then go ahead and do two.
Okay.
Reading into your question, I think, I I view our role, Nick's and mine, really as supporting the city engineer in this. It's, you know, she's the one who has to say, yeah, this is going to work and go forward.
Okay. And is everybody in agreement on the trying to put in things that were beyond the original $2 million scope?
Yeah, if we can get more money, we might as well take advantage of it. Our new budget cycle will be identifying Stanley as a project. So that'll be coming out with our, you know, new adopted budget for this next fiscal year. Because right now Stanley is not identified. So we are pulling that in because we've got resources to do the project and also another funding source to help Stanley out possibly too from the county. So we'll see a little bit more about that in the next couple of weeks.
Other people have questions?
Oh, just a quick question. So you had mentioned a couple of the projects that you're working on, like the improvements that you're working on. What will the extra $400,000 get you?
A sidewalk from Willow down to the bridge on the east side of Stanley. And that that would be ideal if we can get one sidewalk on the and it's and the east side has been designated has been designated in the plan as feasible because there's aren't aren't power lines that you'd have to move. So it's it's and you could you could feel easier to put in a sidewalk on the east side. And that's what that what I'm thinking that $400,000 could could kick into. Yes, right.
That's basically from Ball Michel Park to Johnson Creek, to the bridge at Johnson Creek.
And and I don't it may even be able to go from Johnson Creek to the to Johnson Creek Boulevard, from the bridge to the Boulevard. But I'm not sure. But I think it can go all the way down to the bridge, which would be a great incentive for the county to upgrade the bridge.
Well, I you know, I've been a supporter of this since the very, very first meeting. So this is really exciting and I really appreciate the partnership on your on your side of things, too. Thanks.
Comments? All right. Does anyone have any objection to signing on to this letter? And relatedly, any wordsmithing anyone wants to do to this letter? I mean, Scott will make it all look nice and put it on letterhead for us and all of that. But are we okay with the basic wording of this letter? I'm seeing head nods. Seeing head. Okay, looks like looks like everyone's supportive signing the letter. So we'll let Scott.
Thank you.
Figure out how to make it look pretty and be in the right format. And thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll get the letter formatted and to Jen to distribute accordingly, probably probably tomorrow. But Mayor Beatty, while Jen is at the desk, I might propose an agenda order swap.
I was going to ask the same thing. She may as well stay up here and we may as well do our hearing.
Is that okay, Emma?
Because I think that's going to be probably faster than Emma's Emma's piece, since we've already discussed what Jen is here for. So for the people online, we are jumping from 7A to 8A, the public hearing on the repeal of the downtown and riverfront public area requirements and ordinance. The public hearing on the proposed repeal of the downtown and riverfront public area requirements is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate, and consider repealing the downtown and riverfront public area requirements. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to our engineer, Jennifer Garbley.
All right. Well, we were talking about this in December 5th meeting. And the whole point of this is we have moved a lot of the items from the public area requirements to the public work standards and has basically determined that this document has now become obsolete and out of date. So we're proposing to retire it and move forward with the new public work standards. We have gone through a public comment period now. And so we're looking to finalize those standards and move forward.
And did you get public comments?
I got a couple, not public, more internal comments. I don't know if we've gotten any actual comments from the public at this point.
Okay.
I was out last week.
I'm not aware of any comments from that or correspondence on this matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to comment on the proposed repeal of the downtown and riverfront public area requirements? I don't believe there's anyone in the room who wishes to comment. Is there anyone online, Mr. Software, who wishes to comment?
We have lost our Zoom audience and and there are no emails in the inbox. So.
Okay, so I will forego the rest of this script. So, I will forego the rest of this script about commenting. And staff has no response to the testimony because there was no testimony to respond to. Does council have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. If, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I move to close the public comment part of the downtown and riverfront public area requirements repeal hearing. I second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the downtown and riverfront public area requirements repeal hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard. The comment part of the hearing is closed. Is there any council discussion? All right. I don't see any discussion, so is council ready to vote? I would entertain a motion.
I move for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance repealing the downtown and riverfront public area requirements.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance repealing the downtown and riverfront public area requirements. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Would the city manager please read the ordinance two times by title only?
The ordinance of the city of Milwaukee Bergen repealing the downtown and riverfront public area requirements. And again, the ordinance of the city of Milwaukee Bergen repealing the downtown and riverfront public area requirements.
Mr. Stoffer, would you please poll the council?
Councilor Massey.
Aye.
Council President Nicodemus.
Aye.
Counselor Stavenger.
Aye.
Counselor Krasnerbadi.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2238.
All right. Good job. You get to go home. Thank you. Um, all right. Do we, does anybody feel like they need a break before we go to, onto the next item?
Let's keep it rolling.
Keep it rolling? Okay. Okay. Um, because we do have some things under this last item, just so people know. Um, okay. Then I will invite assistant, no, I'm okay, I'm okay. Assistant City Manager Emma Sager to talk to us about the city's survey. Which was fascinating reading.
Thanks so much for having us tonight. I'm Emma Sager, Assistant City Manager, and I'm really excited to be here tonight with Miranda Everett from FM3 Research to present the results of the community survey we recently conducted in November of last year. My part of this is going to be really brief. You really want to hear from Miranda. She's the brilliant mind behind it all. But I was here at our last meeting talking to you a little bit about our staff, our organizational strategic plan that we're putting together. We chose to do this community survey a little bit off-cycle. We normally do these every two years, but we did this one in 2023 because we really wanted the most recent baseline data to inform our environmental scan as we went into that strategic planning process and as we put together the next biennial budget for your consideration. So, that's why we, we did this. We tried to keep it as consistent as possible with previous surveys so we can track kind of longitudinal trends over time, which Miranda will talk to you about. But we did put in a few kind of timely or topical questions, including a question about how, how Milwaukians feel like we are doing on those values I talked to you about back in December, how, how they feel like staff are living out those values. So, that gives us really great baseline to track against and see if we can improve those numbers as we go forward. I'm going to hand it over to Miranda. I just really want to quickly say FM3 has been a partner with us on these surveys now for, for a few go rounds, and they are just wonderful. They're so great to work with, they're so efficient. Miranda's been an awesome partner, so I'm really appreciative of her time. And I told her to get here at 6:20 because I was so optimistic we were going to be so early today. So, thank you for staying late. And over to Miranda. Thank you. Redmi phone.
Redmi phone.
All right.
Okay. Good evening, councillors. My name is Miranda Everett. I'm a Senior Vice President at FM3 Research. We're a public opinion research and strategy firm based in Oakland, Los Angeles, and as of November, also Portland, which is just me for now.
Miranda moved up here because she liked us so much.
Just for you.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, I'm about 15 minutes away. It was an easy trip this time. So, I'm here to present results of the most recent survey. As mentioned, we have some prior data that's fairly fresh from 2022, but these days, a year can feel like a lifetime, so we checked in on a lot of those baseline questions as well as adding in some new ones, as Emma mentioned. I think overall, there's a lot of really good news here about what folks are satisfied with in the city. We also see places where there's room for improvement that I'll highlight. And in general, I think on those more specific sort of benchmarks for city staff, we see that folks see staff as collaborative, accountable, and accessible. They're less sure about efficient and equitable, and I think some of that is just more kind of wrapping your mind around what that means for city staff and less about dissatisfaction. But we'll dig into that in a second. So, I can start by talking about methodology, which is already on the screen there. Sorry. Yeah, no worries. So, this was a dual-mode resident survey. Dual mode for us means we used online and phone calls as modes of contact, so people received either a text message, sending them to an online survey, or a phone call with an interviewer, kind of live over the phone by cellphone or landline. So, trying to reach folks in all the different ways we know how. This was using residents rather than voters as the kind of key contact, so that's important for us. A lot of our work is with voters. There's a whole list of them, very reliable. To broaden it to residents brings in a little more of our resources here, so this has that broader look of 18-plus folks in the community. The demographics represent those, so we looked at census data and some other sources to make sure it reflects the distribution of age, gender, geography, race, and ethnicity, things like that, income as well, I believe, throughout the city. And we have 563 responses total. We did some oversampling to make sure that we, when we look under the hood at the demographics, we have some confidence to be able to speak to the differences among residents overall, among residents who are Latinx and residents of color who are an identity other than Latinx or other than white alone. So, we'll be able to, to kind of dig into that stuff in more detail, which I think is a little more limited in this version of the presentation, but I've got it all here on my laptop, if you're curious. And this was offered in English and Spanish. So, lots of different ways to reach people, by mode, by language, ways that we made sure that it's reflective of your community. So, we'll start by talking about the context of the community, big picture. One question we asked, as we had in 2022, was how satisfied folks are with quality of life in Milwaukee. 90% say they are satisfied and 37% say they are very satisfied, the top of the scale there. That's a really high figure. I did this work all, all up and down the West Coast, and that's about as high as I see that number. So, I think that is something to be pretty proud of. And you can see that number is even a little bit higher on that very satisfied figure than it was even a year ago. So, I think that is a big piece of good news right up front. The other side of the coin, we also asked folks to tell us a little bit more about their top concern. This was an open-ended question, so they could kind of tell us in their own words what you were thinking. At the top of the list, they said the thing they want the city to address over the next year was something having to do with crime or safety. That is also a trend we're seeing kind of around the West Coast, across the country. Lots of anxiety about that issue, followed closely by homelessness. 15% had some aspect of homelessness in their response, although of course, there's lots of detail to some of the responses on that and some were more broad. Shifts from last year's survey are pretty small. Last year homelessness was at the top of the list. Similar share, though, 16%, with crime at 15%. So, crime has just nudged up just a little bit, homelessness stayed static. And then there are some other themes. You can see road and infrastructure repair at 13%. We'll see some other indications in the survey that that's an area of improvement, as well as affordable housing, which is kind of an existential issue throughout the country these days and particularly in regions like ours.
Ooh. There's some things happening there, though. One moment.
Okay, great. So, next we looked more closely at views of city services. So, the way we structured this question was asking people whether they approve or disapprove of the city's provision of certain services or these different kind of categories. The top of the list is the quality of services provided by the city. 80% approval there, 24% strongly approve. So, that is also another really good number to be quite proud of. I think it's not uncommon to see that lighter shade of blue be bigger, especially with local governments, unless you have a really good personal positive story to tell. It feels like if things are going well, you're sort of in the somewhat approve category, so I think that's something to still feel strongly about. 68% also approve of how the city seeks input about projects and plans. We noted on Engage Milwaukee and other platforms, so most folks really satisfied with that one. And then how the city spends tax dollars it receives. 61% satisfied there to 20% who disapprove, rather, there. What's driving a little less approval, although it's still fairly broad, is just the bigger share who say they don't know. And they're just being honest that they don't look closely at the city's budget, which is also a common finding in these kinds of surveys. Another question we asked folks is about their satisfaction with utility costs. We asked this time about the value you receive for the price you pay for utilities in the city. 66% say they're satisfied, just 10% say very satisfied. Again, not uncommon, I think especially these days if you ask people, are you satisfied with the value you get? Folks are, are, yeah, feeling, feeling pressed by the cost of things. But to have 66% say they're satisfied, I think is a, is a good place to be. We did word it slightly differently in the past. In 2022, we asked if the cost was too high, too low, or about the right amount. 47% said about the right amount, and 34% said the same in 2020. So, that number's been kind of shifting and, and the way we measure it has been shifting, and I think this is kind of about the same or better than it has been in prior years. We then provided a little more information for folks, just to keep everybody sort of on the same page. We let them know the average utility bill for a single-family household is $139. Ran those numbers for them and said what they, what they get for that price. Water, wastewater, stormwater, street, and transportation. After that description of sort of what the costs are and the average amount, satisfaction levels are basically exactly the same. So, being more specific about it didn't add to the total, but it also didn't take away. So, folks kind of are where they are. We also did an exercise that took up kind of the bulk of the survey here, which was assessing city services in a lot more detail. And we'll have just one slide that really rolls this up into the key findings, but there's lots more detail available. We asked two questions about 13 different services. First was, how important is that service, making Milwaukee a good place to live? So, how much do you value it? And then the second is, are you satisfied or dissatisfied? So, are we doing a good job? And then we look at how those two numbers interact. And up in the top right corner, you'll see the things that people really value, that they, they think are really important, equality of life, and they think are going well, that the city's doing well on. In the bottom left corner, you would see the things that people don't see very satisfied, they're not very satisfied with, but also don't care as much about. So, that's a place where there's room for improvement, but maybe less urgent. And then the key area of concern would be anything in kind of the bottom right corner, which you'll see in a second. Those are the places where people really value it and they're dissatisfied compared with other services. So, this next slide shows how that shakes out. Kind of in the top right, you can see sort of a general trend where if you drew a line through it, it would sort of follow from the bottom to the top corners, and I think that, that is a good sign. You want your things that people value the most to be the things they're most satisfied with. That includes utilities, includes addressing public safety issues, it includes sharing information about city business, and then that place where you can see a little less satisfaction and more importance, that bottom right corner, that includes attracting and retaining local businesses and managing streets, maintaining streets, weather. So, those are places where there's potential for improvement. So, we also examined a few other topics in the survey this year. We looked at how people feel about your park system and how they feel about events that happen in the city, what they'd like to see. First, we asked them about parks and recreation facilities in Milwaukee. We asked them if they're satisfied with them on a number of different metrics. The maintenance, 82% said they are satisfied with. 77% said they're satisfied with the number of parks. 70% satisfied with the quality of activities at local parks, and then the number of activities at local parks, 60% satisfaction. So, fairly broad, high numbers there, and especially high for the number of parks and the maintenance of parks. So, folks generally having a pretty positive view of that local resource. We then asked a very broad sort of conceptual question about their willingness to invest kind of personally in maintaining or repairing existing parks or supporting the development of new parks. Here you can see 55% said they're willing to invest something personally, 15% said they're very willing. Now, this is many steps away from kind of a ballot measure. I do a lot of work in that field, and that is the place where we ask questions with the actual title and question that might appear on the ballot. We give some messaging back and forth and see if that's effective. We let people know the mechanism and the amount and a lot of the other details. But this at least, at least gives you a sense that there is majority willingness there. That support is rather soft, as you might expect, because I'm sure a lot of folks have a lot of questions about, well, how much, and how do I pay, and for how long, and what would I fund, and many questions like that. But generally, there is an appetite in the community. So, next, trying to events, we see that nearly two in five recalled attending a city-led event in the last year or so. Looked in the cross tabs at who is most likely to report having attended one of those events. Those folks are higher income, those with kids at home, and the relative newcomers to the city, ones who've moved here in the last few years, kind of getting to know their town. When we look specifically at race and ethnicity, we saw 29% of Latinx residents had attended and 38% of non-Latinx residents of color, so the remainder of those folks. So, essentially, sort of margin of error difference for the non-Latinx residents of color and a little bit lower for the Latinx residents on event attendance. We then asked them a question about a number of goals the city could prioritize in looking at planning for future events. These are ranked in order of the share who called that goal extremely or very important to them. Not, nothing too intense here, which I think kind of underlies the level of, of general satisfaction with this. But what we're looking at, the things that people are most likely to value, that's more multicultural events, 49% saying that's extremely or very important to them. Helping community groups put on events, 46% there. Events in different parts of the city, another 46% there. And then a little bit lower on the list is having them evenly spaced throughout the year. I think there's quite a few in sort of the winter months, which might be when people appreciate them the most. So, next we turn to some views of downtown and neighborhoods. This is sort of a catch-all portion of the presentation where we asked some questions tracking through the, through the years about sort of planning and other issues there. This year, we asked them if the cost of housing is more affordable, less affordable, or about the same as the rest of the region, which is a little different than how we asked it last year. We saw 49% say the cost is about the same, just 19% say it's more affordable than elsewhere. And then when we asked it in 2022, just a year before, 56% of residents said the cost was too high, and 75% said the same in 2020. So, that number's been sort of trending downward in, in terms of the unaffordable cost of too high sort of thing, but when we put it in that regional context, I think generally people have the sense that they're sort of in line with the rest of the region.
So, you're saying you change where you...
Yes.
Will you... I mean, I think somebody could say, now, could say, it's still like...
Exactly. Yeah, it's two different, it's two different questions, honestly. Yeah. We also asked about some types of shops and services that could be added to the downtown. We wanted to know whether people feel these different kinds of shops and services are important and how important they might be. 69% said more dining options is extremely or very important to them. There's a bit of intensity around that, too. 39% saying that's extremely important to them. Retail shops in a similar tier, although a little bit less intensity there. And then parking, 60% want to see more of that, seeing that as, as fairly important to them. And events, a little bit lower on the list, just 49% saying that's extremely or very important to them. Second to last section, I believe, is about the leading library more specifically. Here, we asked people how much they value some different programs and services, and there's a variety of different ways we came at this. Some of them are talking about kind of hours, some are talking about programs, services, things like that. Just wanted to get a sense of what people value for the community, not necessarily for themselves as users, but the value that they place on that being provided. The very top of the list is that kind of basic thing that, that most folks know about libraries, and that is having materials available, like books and movies. 79% say that's extremely or very important to them. Staying open on weekends in the daytime, that was the kind of highest ranking of all the sort of hours, questions that we asked, and actually much higher than the other two. Then we look at things like programming for youth. That is something in a lot of my... That is something in a lot of my library research I see that people especially value. They remember going as kids, they remember taking their kids or grandkids. Makes a lot of sense to have programming there as well as the books and materials. Including diverse voices and collections, sixty percent say that's extremely or very important to them. And then technology, which people increasingly over many years have really seen libraries as kind of a hub for, and you see this in your community as well. Moving down the list a bit more, these are things that just over a majority or fewer say are extremely or very important to them. Although when you look at those shades of blue, if you include the somewhat important, these are all things people value, it's just with a little less intensity than we saw in that last slide. That includes outreach events, later hours on weeknights, kind of after the work hours, library of things items, programming for adults. And then near the bottom of the list are things like bookmobiles or branch libraries, as well as staying open after 5:00 PM on weekends. So that was sort of the lowest of the hours prioritization that people offered. And next, we have communication with city government. So we took this opportunity to hear from folks on, you know, how they like to hear from city staff, how they feel city staff are doing, things like this. This is the five core values question. We asked people whether they agree or disagree with how city staff are doing delivering on these values. And something I think is really important that we did in the survey, and not every client takes the time to do, is actually describe what we mean by these terms. Often, they can be kind of jargony or they're kind of terms of art. Making sure folks kind of understand what we mean when we say, you know, city staff being collaborative, meaning they seek multiple perspectives and work with community partners. Folks really broadly agree that they see that in the city staff. Fifty-nine percent say they agree with that. Fifty-seven percent said the same of accessible, accountable. Fifty-six percent said that. And then you start to see a little bit lower down on the list, so pluralities and fairly broad ones, but just about half is efficient and equitable. And for each of those, about one-third say they don't know. So either they're not quite sure how that concept kind of maps onto staff, or they just haven't seen it in action just yet, but they're not willing to say that they disagree. And so I think there is maybe some room for improvement in demonstrating that, not necessarily a big set of folks who aren't seeing it, but that they might need to see more of it. We also asked people to tell us in a few words of their own where they get information and news about the city. We let them type in as many things as they wanted, or tell our interview as many things as they wanted. Top of the list is the pilot, sixty-eight percent say they get news from that newsletter. Neighbors, friends and family, social media, local news, next door, kind of a smattering of other places people look for that information. And in 2022, fifty-two percent got their news from the pilot, so that's gone up even just a little bit since then. Another way we asked a question is about kind of ways to participate in city government. So ways to give your opinion to decision-makers. And here's a lot of information. It's got 2022 and 2023 side by side. It's sorted by the sort of most used things this year. That includes attending public meetings, twenty-six percent saying that that is something they've done. Often with these questions, people give an answer that they think is like the right answer to give. Of course, I always attend public meetings, of course I weigh in. Sometimes you see, especially after a holiday, it may not be true, but at least shows that there is some kind of interest in civic engagement, and that is sort of the thing that people are saying they attend. Contacting elected officials directly, maybe you've experienced this yourselves, via phone or email. A good share of folks say they're doing that. And then a smattering of other things like your NDA meetings, website feedback, talking to your neighbors. So a wide variety of other ways that people kind of communicate and participate in decision-making that are pretty casual. And then we asked folks to tell us, what are the barriers for you? Why are you not here tonight? And lots of folks are telling us, as you can see at the bottom there, twenty-two percent say, there's not really any barriers, I'm just, it's not part of my life. And in 2022, that was very similar. The most common response was kind of, I don't have a specific barrier, it's just not of interest to me. And we hear that a lot in our research, that folks have a lot of a time and attention, things competing. And so that can be lower on the list. But of the folks who did offer something that they thought would be helpful, more reminders that it's happening, topics that are interesting to them, schedule options that line up with areas, and of course, you know, for some folks that is during the day, for some folks it's at night, for some folks it's the weekend, so it's hard to find one that everybody can agree on. And then, you know, a variety of other things like virtual options or incentives, or even just the sense that when you show up and weigh in, you're heard. So that takes the end of the survey results here. And as I mentioned, we have lots of cross-tab data that I've shared with Emma and the staff, and can really dig into if you'd like. But overall, the upshot, I think, is that residents are pretty satisfied with the quality of life here. They approve of the city's work providing services, adding tax dollars, and seeking input for your plans and projects. And that is something I think to be quite proud of, especially in these challenging times. Crime, homelessness, road repairs, affordable housing, those are all key topics across the region and here, too. Notably, nineteen percent believe the cost of housing is more affordable here than elsewhere. And I think throughout any place in the survey where we ask about costs, people kind of express that they wish they were lower, which makes perfect sense. And it's important to know that some of the services they value the most, like street maintenance, retaining local businesses, police services, public safety, utilities, are some of the ones that they're the most satisfied with. And the places where there's room for improvement are those roads and businesses pieces. Lots of really good ratings for park and recreation, lots of good ratings for the things letting libraries doing, particularly the availability of materials, that's something that's important to folks, and being open on the weekend during the day. And then the pilot continues to be an important source of information, and there continues to be a variety of ways that people say they participate and things that they say would make them more likely to participate. Some of those things the city can do something about, and others of which you can't. But yeah, lots here, so happy to take questions.
I'm ready. Actually, I only have two questions. First of all, thank you, this is really great, and it's exciting to dig through, even at this kind of surface level. Can't wait to see the cross tabs. One of the things that stood out for me last year is the question about the cost of housing. When you disaggregate that for low-income households, the number just skyrocketed in terms of the cost. And I'm wondering, even with the change of the question this year, if you were able to delineate for lower-income families or lower-income households and what that looks like? And then, you want me to keep going with the second question while you're kind of digging?
Yeah.
Okay. The second question was, last year, there were questions also about kind of the future of downtown. And there was a specific question about how you get downtown. Car, walk, bus, bike, was that a question that was asked again this year? And what sort of trends did you find there?
I can take the second one while Miranda's looking up the cross tabs on the first one. But I'm ninety-nine point nine percent certain we did eliminate that one in this survey. For a few reasons, we kind of came up with all the questions that collaboratively with all the department heads. And when talking with Joseph about that specific question, I think they, their team felt like there's ways to get information about commute patterns and travel patterns through things like census and frankly, probably like TSP outreach that's going to be going on that might be more helpful in this immediate term than this. We still have the data from 2022, which I think is probably still pretty relevant. As you saw here, not a lot of things had major trend shifts, but so that's why we didn't include it in this one. But we could definitely pull back the 2022 results and share those with you.
Well, I remember last year, getting downtown by car was ninety percent, which is just, I mean, it seemed like such a huge number. But then, I mean, I think there were probably, you could select multiple options, because then walking downtown was thirty-six percent.
Okay.
So it was just, it was interesting to me, and because, you know, we are in the TSP process, that one especially came to mind again. I'm not saying that we need to, you know, dig up anything new or do anything new or anything like that. I'm just, I'm kind of wondering, you know, moving into that process, if that's something that's worth engaging the TSP, the Transportation System Plan Advisory Committee in a conversation around.
Yeah, absolutely. We can follow up on that.
Thank you.
And to the first question on kind of housing cost affordability question by income, definitely that pattern is there. Thirty-three percent of those in households earning $150,000 or more say it's more affordable, and just fourteen percent of those in households earning less than $600,000 do. So that, it's a pretty stark difference, and you see kind of in the in-between income bands that sort of step up as you go. Yeah, so for the highest income households in this is $150K plus, that's household income. Thirty-three percent feel that it's more affordable than the rest of the region. Twenty-five percent less affordable, forty percent about the same. When we look at the lowest income bracket, it's fourteen percent more affordable, thirty-four percent less affordable, and forty-five percent about the same.
And you said the lowest income bracket is under $600,000?
Under sixty.
Oh, under sixty, okay.
Under sixty.
Okay, okay.
Lots of numbers coming here. But yeah, there's no group of folks who really are kind of jumping up and down and saying, this is the affordable place, but I think that sensitivity is higher at the lower income levels, which makes kind of perfect intuitive sense, too. Yeah.
Is that, sorry, quick follow-up question. Is the, is the response for that particular question large enough that you could cross-tab that by Latinx or communities of color?
Yeah, I don't have it.
You don't have to do it right now.
By race and ethnicity and income, but I have it by just race and ethnicity. So for Latinx communities, fifty-five percent say it is less affordable than elsewhere in the region. For the remainder of people of color, it is thirty-five percent. So pretty stark difference there. And then for folks who only identified as white, those folks, twenty-five percent said it's less affordable. So those differences by race are even more pronounced than by income.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's some interaction there, but not perfect. Yeah.
I appreciate it. I just thank you for pointing that out, because that's actually my, what I was gonna, because I didn't see it on the slide, the fifty-five percent of Latinx residents say the cost is less affordable. Yeah, so thank you for this report and pointing this out. I was actually kind of shocked at these numbers a little bit in terms of a little higher, as far as, as it pertains to our BIPOC community, right? I mean, and historically, that's what it's been. It's always more expensive for them, always more difficult, always more complicated. So the numbers don't surprise me in terms of when you break it down by ethnicity, right? Where the differences lie. And $150,000, yeah, I'm sure a lot of people made $150,000 in the city, they probably feel it's a lot more affordable, too. I did have a question in the government section in terms of, I'm scrolling to it, the public meetings and the way to participate. Some of these areas, there's a pretty big drop-off from 2022. And that's a little bit concerning to me, just because, you know, it just shows me that less people are engaging with us in actually every category. And I'm trying to figure out, I wonder what that, like, our serving on board city order or commissions is half, half as much as it was last year. There's just some big disparities here. I'm curious to know what exactly is causing that. Was there any follow-ups to this question?
No, given the limited time in the survey, they've kind of seen all the top-line questions there. You know, some of this, too, you might have actual numbers on. You may have headcounts from city meetings, you may have actual numbers of things submitted, and you could sort of kind of truth check these versus what people said in the survey. And I would say, you know, given the margin of error of the survey, it's about five, six percent. Some of these changes are not too substantial. I'd say the kind of attending a meeting on a specific issue or plan is a little bit lower. Contacting elected officials directly is a little bit lower. NDA meetings, a little bit lower. And feedback on the city website is a little bit lower, but the other changes are pretty similar statistically. So I'm not sure what might be causing that. I think for some folks, and this is totally anecdotal, is that kind of as the world has opened up a lot more, folks are sort of finding a lot more demands on their time and attention, particularly things like kind of out there in the world, and maybe spend a little less time on the internet and on Zoom and things like that and those kinds of things. But I'd be curious to see how that lines up with, or it does not line up with the actual numbers of headcounts and things like that that you guys might have.
Yeah, I'd be curious, too, because I don't think '22 was that big of a difference from '23 in terms of people getting out, things opening up, really. When I look at things like attending ethnic or cultural community meetings, and that cut in half, it just, it just makes me think like, you know, is it our BIPOC community that's feeling like they're being left out here or losing that engagement? Or is it overall? Because then when you look at for staff, you know, you have thirty-three percent somewhat agree, and fifteen percent that strongly agree are equitable, meaning that they meet people where they are and reduce disparities. There's a twenty, there's a twelve percent that strongly disagree. And it'd be interesting to see that breakdown. Is it a majority of our white community members that are somewhat agree and strongly agree on equitable? And is it twelve percent that strongly disagree with the majority of our BIPOC community members? I mean, I would like to, because if that twelve percent is the majority of our BIPOC community members, that's a big concern for me, especially if the forty-nine percent is majority white residents of Milwaukee. That's a big concern. Because I feel like that, you know, that has to do directly with our goal.
And we can pull those cross tabs.
Okay.
Miranda's a miracle worker over here with the giant spreadsheet.
Comparison to last year, I'll have to circle back with you all if, but I can, I can look as we're talking about the equity question and see where the strongly disagreement might be concentrated, if anywhere.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Massey?
Thank you, Miranda. This is a lot to take in. Could we go back to your original slide? I'm not going to take you through all of them, I'm just going to say one. The one where, you know, the bar.
Methodology.
The bar, no, no, well, maybe number, slide number two, the one, the bar graph that had the, that's it.
Orange.
This guy.
Yeah.
This one. So I appreciate this slide a lot. You know, it looks simple, but, you know, when I think back to where we have had people in the audience and they were animated, it wasn't over crime or safety, okay? It was over parking, or too much growth and development. And so I think it's interesting to put this in context, about the numbers of people who think that this is important, but I don't think it tells us the intensity of some of those, those, you know, concerns. Is there a way to deal with that? I mean, you know.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, there's all kinds of tools for hearing from folks, and one of them is the ones who, you know, find the time for the city council meeting, figure out the rules, know what the agenda item is on to speak to, or the comment and things like that. And that's sort of different levels. And then in my job, you know, we pick a random set of folks, and we call them, and we ask them, tell me what you're thinking, top of your head, while you're making dinner, or whatever it is. And that's a totally different question, right? But that does, that is another way of sort of capturing a broader view, and maybe one that may have less intensity, or may just simply have, you know, bring in folks who don't have the time or energy to participate those other ways. So they're just different ways of hearing from folks, but I think this is a way to sort of get a kind of bird's eye view of the broader community and what's kind of on their minds right now. And here, people put off from within one response as well. So you may see people who say crime, but also streets and things like that.
Well, I think it's informative for us to, you know, when we have a, you know, a larger animated group, to put it in context and that kind of thing. But, you know, we sometimes complain about the length of this meeting, but I know on the Planning Commission, Anna and I have been on Planning Commission meetings at eleven o'clock with a room full of people. So anyway, let me go to my second question, and that is, I appreciate the fact that we, you know, sort of tailor the questions to get what we think are more useful responses. But I also believe that you have to do that judiciously over time. Because if you change them too often, then it's kind of hard, you know, to track it, quantify it over time, and that kind of thing. And so that's just sort of a general statement. But I think the value of having continuity in the way that you pose questions is it allows you to really benchmark against other cities. Do you do any of that?
Yeah, so we, we have a lot of data from other clients. We do tons of work in Portland and throughout the region. We do lots of work in the Bay Area, LA, all the way up to Seattle, kind of along the West Coast. I do lots of work weirdly in Montana and Idaho. So I have data points for Boise and Missoula, and, you know, things like that. And a lot of it, you know, every client is going to want to ask the question their way, or they may have been asking it for the same way for twelve years, which is slightly different than their neighbor has. So we have a sort of holistic sense of the trends that I was kind of speaking to as we went. But in terms of apples-to-apples questions, I could take a closer look at where we have those for the question like satisfaction with quality of life. I think that's a standard one we ask in a lot of places. Um, so I could I could look at that offline and come back to you, but I think in general, you you guys are comparing pretty well to to lots of other communities these days.
Okay. Thank you.
And and Councilor Massey, I would just add that I I agree with you that we need to be judicious about when we change things. I think what was interesting this time, I mean, we we really, anytime we were gonna, we proposed changing something, we really wrestled with why. And I felt a little more comfortable taking, doing some of those changes with this one because it was that off-year cycle. When we go back out in in two years from now, I mean, we can we can determine if we're going to move on from that new baseline or go back to the previous where we asked it. But for example, on the affordability question, I think we were, we were interested in is 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 everyone's kind of initial reaction going to be, of course, it's too high. And if asking about that regional comparison lets us glean any additional information that we couldn't get from the other question. But um, you're you're absolutely methodologically that having that that overtime track is is invaluable um, in in data collection.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a few. Um, one is, um, I'm, well, while we're on this slide, I'll do this one. So the change in homelessness, fifteen, sixteen percent, that seems, you know, margin of error or whatever, but the change in crime and safety is a big enough change. That's a concern that it caught my attention. Um, I guess my sense is, you know, our crime and safety is better, our crime, you know, our safety is better the further we've gotten out of COVID. So any ideas why that number's going up?
Yeah, and this is a pattern I've been seeing in kind of similar similarly situated cities to yours throughout the country is sort of, especially if you're sort of close in suburb to a place with a lot of struggles in this area. People read the news and think about the news that's local, and they're not thinking about city lines. And so if you're asking them about what's what's on your mind, what's keeping you up at night, it might be crime and safety, even if you also ask them a question, as we often do in many places later in the survey, do you feel safe in your community? Do you feel safe in your schools? Yeah, of course, eighty, ninety percent. But when you ask them what's on their mind, crime and safety is there because it's in the news, and it's it's kind of what they see on Facebook and talk about with friends. Um, so I think some of that stuff sort of bleeds into their perceptions in in a survey like this one.
Okay, interesting. Okay. So page, I'm gonna use our page numbers, which are gonna help you with your slides, but RS forty-two, which, um, oh, yeah, this is about a term you used. So you used a term, uh, those who know enough to offer a rating.
Ah, yes.
So you are saying, I mean, are they self-assessing?
Yes.
That they know enough, or are you just saying, dropping out the people who decline to answer?
Yes, we, and that is, that is uh, related to the satisfaction question. So people, we ask them, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with, say, you know, police services or something like that. And there may be folks who say, yes, I'm satisfied, I called the police, they solved my problem. Great. Um, there may be folks who say they were dissatisfied, they pulled me over, I didn't like that, or whatever it may be. There may be some folks who haven't had occasion to interact with the police in the last year, and so they'll say, I don't know. And so we remove those from from that calculation just because um, also often we may ask about, you know, um, permitting or or things where lots of folks don't interact with that, and so they they don't really, it can look like levels of satisfaction are low, but it's really because there are so many people who don't use it.
Okay.
And so that's why we remove them sort of from the calculation there.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next page, RS forty-three, I thought was really interesting. Those broad shares are also satisfied with park enforcement, retention, street maintenance. It was fascinating to me that enforcing city codes and property maintenance standards had a higher uh, importance or a higher satisfaction rating. Well, I guess, I guess it's satisfaction rating, it's not the importance they're putting on it. Okay, than attracting businesses or maintaining streets. But I guess, um, yeah, I guess, actually, now that I'm rereading that, I guess that makes sense. I was thinking of it as ranking it as important. Which brings me to parking. I thought kind of interesting on your um, on a lot of these things, parking was low. On your chart with the eleven bars, parking was quite low. Um, on some of these other things, parking was low, but on the one you asked about downtown, there was quite a bit of concern about parking. I don't think we have a parking issue at the present, but um, I do think the day is coming. Um, but uh, yeah, that it was, that it was um, more of interest or more than events. I mean, that kind of caught my attention.
Yeah.
Parking was considered something that we need more of or need to add to more than events.
Yeah, and I think this this trend sort of makes sense to have dining and retail be higher. Um, those are the things you would park to enjoy. Um, and then think, I've seen in other communities where it's totally reversed, where there's, we have plenty of places to eat, there's nowhere to park. That's the opposite problem, right? Um, and so I think that that explains sort of the the relationship we see here. And then having events be lower than parking may just be, folks are satisfied with the events we have, or if they're not the types that they like to attend and things like that. So there are many different kind of ways into uh, having a lower priority for events than for parking, where parking is kind of, anytime you go downtown, you may need parking, and so it's something that's in the mix for you.
Okay. And the, um, I wanted to ask about your ability and your, whatever you call it, your disaggregated data um, to search by parts of town. Okay, so you had a question on there about the library and uh, then uh, what things, what people, uh, okay, not that one, the next one. I think there was a different one. Yeah, providing access to library services outside of the library, such as external lockers, branch locations, but opial. I would really love to know how that was answered on the east side of town. Because that's very different for people in Linwood, in Llewellyn, than it is for most of the rest of the city.
So on the east side of town, forty-six percent said it was extremely or very important to them. That's compared with thirty-nine percent citywide. So east forty-six, west twenty-six. So it's a big, big difference between the two sides of town on that one, as you suspected.
Okay.
And that is the way we broke it down. We had a a list of neighborhoods, and then given the kind of overall sample size, we did east and we did west. That's how we.
Okay, okay, okay. That's good to know. I thought that was a little too rosy looking right there. Um, okay, uh, it looks like Councilor Costa Ratti had another question?
Just, thank you, man. You don't have to scroll all the way back to the bar graph. I got it right here. I I'm glad you brought up the point on the crime and safety, because I I I was shocked, too, that it was a high. Uh, and I'm sure that that's probably more taking into the surrounding areas, uh, more specifically probably Portland and then, you know, uh, east, eighty-second eastward. On the, on the affordable housing, I see twelve percent, then I see cost of living at three. Would it be accurate to kind of combine those two, just because of housing cost does constitute cost of living? So would it be accurate to assume that that concern is more closer to fifteen percent as opposed to twelve or three?
Yeah, I think that's totally fair. I think when we categorize and code it, it's a little bit of art, too, because these are whole sentences or phrases. Um, I think often when we ask those questions, we ask cost of housing, cost of utilities, cost of gas, childcare, housing is at the top. It's sort of most people's number one biggest monthly expense if they have it. Um, so I think that's driving a lot of the concern about cost of living, especially rent here.
Right, which, yeah, because you can't, can't live without paying for your household, so to speak. So, okay, so it'd be more like fifteen percent, so it'd be on par with homelessness, really?
Yeah, I'd say that. And many people, I think, that that is a place where you see some overlap, where people acknowledge that there's a relationship between those two things.
Absolutely. That's why I wanted to bring that up, because they they go pretty hand in hand. So, thank you very much.
And did we by chance find that, um, if there was any um, cross-tab difference on the uh, who said the city staff were equitable?
Yeah, so we took a look at that. There wasn't a, there was actually kind of the 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 folks, let's see, I have it here. Um, so among Latinx respondents, seventy-nine percent agreed uh, that city staff are equitable. Among the other folks of color, sixty-one percent, um, compared with fifty-nine percent for residents overall. So Latinx folks are a little more likely to agree. I was looking for a place where there might be more disagreement sort of concentrated demographically, and there, it's not really there. It's it's kind of more like, folks have been around longer, older, a little dissatisfied, but there's nothing that's really sticking out um, to me in the data. There is a little more uh, among the the white folks, twenty-eight percent who say they don't know. Um, so those those may be folks who say, well, that doesn't apply to me, I'm not, I'm not one to judge there, which brings that number down a little bit um, in terms of satisfaction, but doesn't really uh, bring the dissatisfaction up or the disagreement up.
I would just say that I think the fifty-five percent number on willing to pay more for parks with no push is a pretty darn good number. I think it's higher than it was for the library. When we started looking at the bond for the library, I don't think it was that high. So I think that's actually kind of encouraging. Yeah, um, but anyway, uh, okay. Well, if there are no other questions, we will thank you very much. Emma, can, if we have follow-up questions and we want some of this other data, Emma can get that first.
I've got it all.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Council, and thanks, Miranda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. All right, so we have Council, um, we have Scott next, right, on, uh, good grief, my script is mess. Okay, we, oh, yeah, legislative and regional issues, because we are getting back into a legislative session in the months, so.
That's right. And Commander and Council, uh, tonight, my my reporting is very uh, minimal and mostly asking, uh, start giving your, me your topics and your feedback. Uh, this is a short legislative session, begins, I believe, February fifth, runs thirty-five days, no long, no, not past March tenth, I believe, is the calendar, just looking at all this. Um, no bills are loaded there yet, so I haven't heard, I've asked our, uh, NNI staff colleagues for the issues that they're tracking through their professional associations, and the list is blank right now. So uh, I'll be taking the lead on this again for the short session this year. So as issues come up, the Council wants the city to track and report on and discuss here, please send them to me, and I'll start the list and start updating them. So at this point, if Council has any issues to add to the list now or anything to talk about, that's what we're here to do.
Well, I, um, I mean, I do think, obviously, it's it's gonna be less of a list um, and and far less fluid of a list than last year, because the bills already have to be in. You know, they had to be in in November or something. Um, so, and they had very strict numerical limits. So, I mean, the governor could put in some bills and the how, the leadership of the legislature can put in some bills still, I guess, but most members cannot. And um, I would ask everyone, I think you probably got an email or two from the League about the um, sort of coalition approach to revisiting Measure One Ten. I would ask everyone to please read that stuff between now and our um, uh, meeting on the sixteenth in two weeks, uh, because I do want to discuss that. And I have asked the police chief uh, to weigh in with his views on that as well. Um, so um, I would like to have a discussion of that in a couple of weeks. Um, other things?
Well, just a question on your comment. Are you contemplating a resolution?
I am.
On One Ten?
Or a letter, yeah. So I want to have a conversation around that. Um, um, other things people are tracking or want Scott to watch for? I mean, I think we know there's, the governor will have a bill uh, that is about uh, what HB thirty-four fourteen was, you know, the new version of it, thirty-four fourteen, and a few drafts have floated around. Um, I don't know that we've seen what's gonna be introduced yet. I'm looking at Joseph to see if he knows. No? Okay. So that'll be one. We should definitely watch, but anything else? I, uh,
Hi, Council. Uh, just one thing I wanted to let you all know is that later on, well, today, essentially, uh, HB twenty-eight fifty-four, it could be wrong on that number, went into effect basically allowing um, commercial zoning to be utilized for residential, uh, without a zoning change or without a SCUP. So just FYI, that's a new law. Thank you.
Do we have any reason to think? Anyone's?
Yeah, yeah, I think there's some interest here, so we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Yes, I think so.
It's, it's pretty restricted. Um, we can get you more information, but I think it's for for um, significantly like thirty percent or sixty percent, am I?
And is it only commercial? I mean, I thought it was all about offices and down, yeah, sort of downtown Portland offices or something, or is it also industrial?
That's what they were targeting is more office space. But yeah, if I remember correctly, it's also industrial potential, too.
Wow, it would be good to get whatever summary is out there.
Yeah. Because I also think we might be thinking two different paths.
Yeah, and then, um, yeah, I was just reading about it right when this item came up, so I was like, oh, so I'm a little bit off the cuff.
Okay. Okay.
More to go.
Thank you. Um, okay, anything else on legislation before we move on to other types of Council reports? Oh, okay. Council reports. Anybody have reports they want to make? We, I mean, we sort of had some during the work session. I definitely have one on the DAC, but I want to give anybody else a chance uh, first. No, no takers? Okay. Um, Scott, can you queue up my slides on the DAC? So at the last meeting, which I attended, as you may recall, remotely, and uh, the Council President chaired, uh, I did report that that very day, uh, the uh, the DAC had gotten word that the um, uh, that the county commissioners, acting as the Board of NCPRD, had given notice to uh, the Wichita Center and the Cascade Heights Charter School that it was terminating their leases effective, giving them a hundred and eighty-day notice, essentially, uh, under their lease agreements. Um, I had previously um, been told that the lease on the Wichita Center went until um, the summer of twenty twenty-six, so that's effectively cutting them off by um, two years. Uh, the school district may be trying to buy the Wichita Center, I think time will tell. Um, but I wanted to share some of the things that the county commissioners and NCPRD said back in twenty eighteen when they acquired those properties. So I looked at the website. Um, there are some data, they called it the strategic partnership. So it was a land swap between the school district and NCPRD. A lot of it was about transferring Hoodview Park, which was out in Happy Valley, to the school district as a as an area to go along with the new high school that was being built out there or being rebuilt. Um, in return, NCPRD got Concord, got three schools that were not being used as schools any longer. Concord, Clackamas Elementary, and Wichita. Um, so they have this whole website about the strategic partnership, and there's some three documents there, you can see on the right-hand side. And there's a uh, YouTube video, and about three minutes long. I won't show you the whole video, but the next slide has what they say in the video. So, uh, once the transaction is complete, North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District will open discussions to the public so that the community can decide how to revitalize and repurpose these three facilities and the surrounding green spaces for the enrichment of everyone who lives, works, and plays in Clackamas County. So we know they're moving forward on the Concord School, but on the other two, they've not done any of this, as far as I'm aware. They have not lived up to their commitments um, for either of those other two properties. Um, and then I just wanted to show, so this is an FAQ page, which is, a lot of it is about the um, uh, the ball field, you know, the athletic fields. You can go ahead. You can go ahead and, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they had answers there that the school was, uh, renting back the Wichita Center, um, at the time, but still, and you can go on to the last slide, I think, Scott, um, at this point. Go on, keep going, keep going. Okay. Again, a commitment for public engagement about the future of these schools. Um, I won't read it to everyone, you can read it for yourself, but, um, again, uh, the county commissioners, you know, made certain, uh, assurances to the community about how they were gonna handle the acquisition of these two schools, and now they have decided in closed session, without having had any of this public engagement, uh, apparently to, uh, you know, to sell, to potentially sell these schools. I guess if they are gonna sell these schools, they will at some point have to, uh, declare them surplus, and there will be some opportunities to comment maybe at that point. But, um, you know, there's been a lot of stuff going on behind closed doors and, uh, some, some more aggregation of, uh, assurances made to the community. So I just wanted people to be aware of that. Um, it's, it's disturbing, and two members of the, uh, well, I don't want to tie too much of a causal link to it, um, because I think there were other causes, but after, in the same week that this happened, two member, the two leading officers of the District Advisory Committee resigned from the committee. Um, so, uh, things are not going well at the District Advisory Committee, I would say. Um, the good news is today, uh, we heard that they have, or that tomorrow, the job posting will go up for the new, um, NCPRD director. And so hopefully in a couple of months, they may have hired a new director. Anyway, that's what I wanted to brief people on. We have our first DAC meeting next week, uh, since November, um, and it'll be an interesting meeting. Um, okay. I think with that, if no one else has any Council reports?
I have.
You do?
Well, it's not a report.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a statement. "It is with a mixture of gratitude and a heavy heart that I submit my resignation from the City Council. I have thoroughly enjoyed the experience and opportunities to serve our community during my tenure on the Council. However, recent developments have led me to reevaluate my priorities, and I have come to the difficult decision to step down from this role. As you may be aware, I've recently taken on a new responsibility that demands a significant amount of my time and attention, returning to the classroom as a third-grade teacher. Balancing the responsibilities of City Council and my teaching duties has proven to be an overwhelming challenge, and I have found myself unable to fulfill both roles with the dedication and effectiveness that they deserve. I want to express my deepest gratitude to my family, particularly my wife, Jillian, and my son, Rio, for their unwavering support and sacrifices they have made during my time on City Council. Their understanding and encouragement have been instrumental in allowing me to pursue this public service opportunity. I'm also immensely grateful for the support of those who dedicated their time and efforts to my campaigns, Celestina, Jacob, and Paul, all played crucial roles, and I am indebted to them for their commitment to our shared vision for the community. I extend my sincere appreciation to both past and current Council members with whom I have had the privilege to work. It has been an honor collaborating and dedicated individuals who share a passion for the betterment of our city. I have learned a great deal from each of you, and I am grateful for the friendships and partnerships that have developed during my time on Council. Working alongside the city staff has been an invaluable experience. I want to express my thanks to Anne, Joseph, Scott, John, Gabriella, Adam, Dr. Passirelli, Justin, and the other staff members whose hard work and dedication contribute to the success of our community. Their tireless efforts behind the scenes do not go unnoticed, and I am grateful for the positive working relationships we have cultivated. Finally, I am proud to have served as the first Black woman and person of color on City Council. While my time in this role may be coming to an end, I am confident that others will follow in my footsteps, contributing to the diverse representation that our community deserves. I want to assure you that my commitment to the well-being and progress of our city remains unwavering, and I look forward to continuing my support to our community in new ways. I believe that stepping down from City Council is the right decision at this time, and I am confident the Council will continue to thrive under capable leadership. Thank you once again for the opportunity to serve our community. It has been a privileged, privilege, and I am grateful for the experiences and relationships that have enriched my life during my time on the City Council. Thank you."
Wow. Wow. Well, I'm really sorry to hear it, but you have to do what you have to do. Um, yeah, three good solid years. Yep. Well, well, you will be, you will be missed. Um, you always brought a, um, you brought a particular voice, particular, not just as a person of color, as a crazy Michigan fan, and, and other ways, you brought a particular voice to, um, to our meetings, and, um, we're gonna miss you. Is this effective immediately? Is this a phased-in thing?
Uh-huh.
An effect, yeah. Okay. Well, if anyone wants to chime in?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you. I've learned a lot from you, and it's been amazing to do this work with you, and I really appreciate everything that you bring to our community and everything that your family contributes to Milwaukee. Um, I'm grateful to have had the time to be with you, and, um, this is not an easy thing to do, and I just really respect your bravery and who you are as a person.
And I know I'm speaking for all of staff, but I say thank you for the unwavering support and the kindness that you have shown us, the way you've pushed us to be better, the way you've helped us be better. We will miss you terribly.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, we, we spent, we spent one year, almost two years, on Council together. Uh, and I, I gotta say, I learned a lot from you too, and it wasn't just hard work on the Council. Um, you know, you took time to, to help me outside of Council, uh, and I'll never forget that, um, because it shows that it's not just what we do here and what's on the camera, but things matter outside of this office and this building. And, uh, it was a difficult time in my life, and I just really appreciate you stepping in and showing up and just being there to help. You don't find people like that these days, unfortunately, so thank you for being an inspiration and someone that people can look to and follow.
Thank you for all your contributions to our city. Thank you for your perspective that I learned a lot from. Um, you're really gonna be missed. I hope, I hope we see you periodically. Hope we see you out there.
[laughing]
Come to a meeting.
Up on one of those empty seats.
Yeah, but you really are gonna be missed, I understand. Yeah.
Wow. Well, I feel like, yeah, there should be some kind of function or some kind of send-off or...
You know, just something, point of order, if we never gavel out, then he never has to leave, right?
That's true.
[laughing]
I'm in. Are you all in?
It's a continued meeting, and so it's, yeah, not...
[laughing]
I don't think we have votes.
[laughing] Oh, oh.
Way to throw a wrench.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, we, we got off track in doing our council dinners, but I would kind of like to do one before you, before you go. I don't, I mean, I'll talk to Hannah about whether we can pull something like that together. And, okay. Um, all right. Well, on that somber note...
It's like the first time we're all sat in a joint.
Well, it's funny, because he's usually the one to make the motion, so...
And he can't do it now.
[laughing] Well, any last things for the good of the order, or, uh, otherwise I will entertain a motion?
Move to adjourn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go blue.
[laughing] Oppose, say no?
No.
No.
Okay, you have a dissenting vote. Good, good for her.
Uh-huh. I still think the ayes have it, so I guess the meeting is adjourned.